Good evening. My name is Kathleen Brown, Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, and I call this formal meeting of the School Board to order at 6:00 PM on this fourteenth day of 2025. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the role?
Thank you, Madam Chair, President in the School Board Chamber, our Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Ms. Dwyer, Ms. Felton, Dr. Green, Ms. Melnick, and Ms. Rogers.
Thank you. If you would join me as you're able in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Clerk) Plaids allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do not have any student employee and public awards recognitions this evening, so we will move on to the adoption of the agenda. I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented. Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Callen. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to adopt the agenda as presented.
So, Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Thank you. Dr. Robertson, do you have any recognitions this evening?
I do. So, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm pleased tonight to introduce you to someone you probably know well, but Aaron Arnold. He formerly was a work-based learning specialist in the Office of Technical Career Education, and now he is the new coordinator of work-based learning in the Office of Technical and Career Education. Congratulations.[742.72][742.72](APPLAUSE) And I see you have some guests.
(Clerk) Yes. Good job on that last part. Yeah, Aaron's done a great job for us. We
are so excited for him. So, congratulations. And that's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are now on to the approval of meeting minutes for September 23rd, 2025. Are there any modifications to those minutes as presented? Seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the September 23rd, 2025 regular School Board meeting minutes. Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Callen. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote to approve the minutes.
So, Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the minutes from September 23rd, 2025.
Thank you. We are now on to the public comment portion of our agenda. We will hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12, public education in Virginia Beach, and the business of the School Board and the School Division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the School Board Clerk prior to noon today. The purpose for the public comment section is for the School Board to offer an orderly forum to receive public comments during the School Board meeting. I call upon all speakers and persons in the chambers to be civil in discussion and decorum. Whatever views you wish to express, the School Board wants to hear from you and ensure that all viewpoints and perspectives are heard. The best way for us to do this is for all to strike for civility and respect. Madam Clerk, would you please introduce the first speaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to make a note that Speaker Number Two had to cancel, so our first speaker this evening will be Cody Connor, then Alberto McCallas, and then Jenna Free.
Good evening. In 1990, Congress passed the Hate Crime Statistics Act, and since then, the FBI has collected data and reported on hate crimes in the U.S. Now, for many years, outside of a spike after 9/11, the number of reported hate crimes remained relatively consistent at around 8,000. In 2009, the number of reported hate crimes began dropping significantly, and in 2014, we had the lowest reported number of hate crimes in two decades at just over 5,000. And in 2015, a billionaire elitist who'd never had to worry about affording groceries or rent or medical bills in his life came down an escalator and grabbed America by the you-know-what. Told us about how it was the immigrants and minorities and LGBTQ community that were causing our problems, how he's going to save us from all the different people and make America great again. And the MAGA movement was born. And hate crimes also began to rise. The language of our politics took on a tone of fear-mongering, intentional disrespect, and divisiveness. People were called vermin. Bigoted behavior that dehumanized others became encouraged and rewarded. Hateful discriminatory rhetoric became hateful discriminatory policy, and hate crimes surged to the highest level since reporting began, to nearly 12,000. In 2023 and 2024, the number of reported hate crimes was more than double than that of 2014. That correlation is way too specific for me to believe that it is coincidence. When those hateful discriminatory policies came to our schools, discriminating against trans students, I stood up and said, "Keep these policies out of our schools." But you let them in because the governor told you to, just following orders, I guess. I told you then that I would keep speaking until that wrong was made right, and so I was here standing up when those policies came for diversity, equity, and inclusion, when they came for everyone else that is different. And I told you to keep these policies out of our schools, but you let them in because the DOE sent a letter, just following orders again, I guess. History hasn't been real kind to that excuse. People ask me why I keep speaking. Why is this so important? You control what our children learn and the environment in which they learn. And at a time when hate crimes have reached unprecedented levels, I can't think of anything more important than what our children are taught.[1012.49][1012.49](BEEP) Hate will not make us great, and when it came knocking at the doors of our schools, you had the power to keep it out, and you let it in. And I will stay here, standing up and speaking out, until you make it right.
Our next speaker is Alberto McCallas, Jenna Free, and then Heather Sype.
Hello. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the School Board. My name is Alberto McCallas. I'm here with my wife Bailey. We are parents of two children in the DLI program, and we're here to express our sincere concern about the recent decisions reducing its scope and limiting options for families. This program was the main reason our family chose to live in Virginia Beach. Our biracial children are thriving in this bilingual environment, and as a fluent bilingual myself, I know the value of illiteracy. That's why it's troubling to see such a valuable, successful program reduced without minimal, meaningful parent input. We also want to highlight a serious issue of access and inclusion. School Board meetings are conducted only in English with no Spanish translation or summaries of minutes available in Spanish. Given that many of our DLI families are Spanish-speaking, this policy effectively excludes those families from fully participating in decisions that directly impact their children's education. This must change. National research from research, sorry, I'm a little nervous, from organizations like RAND Corporations and Georgia State University confirmed that real academic and cognitive benefits of DLI. Students in DLI consistently outperformed non-DLI peers in reading and math. English learners in DLI progressed faster in English, reducing the time they are classified as ELs. Studies, including the longitudinal analysis in Portland, showed immersion students are nearly a full year ahead of English reading by fifth grade. I know you believe you hear what parents are saying. I heard that during the last meeting. But I do not think that you truly understand the long-lasting impact these decisions, or your decisions, will have in our children. For our native Spanish-speaking students, DLI provides a culturally responsive environment that supports their academic and personal growth. If the program is reduced, how will these students be supported? Continuing to study core subjects like math and science in Spanish strengthens both their academic and native language skills. We understand staffing challenges exist, but these are not new. You guys all knew about this from the echo. They must be addressed through strategic planning and recruitment, not by dismantling the program that has proven successful and is vital to so many families. You know, we are the parents. We are here to help. We want to work together. And, you know, we urge the Board to pause this rush process, listen to the DLI families, and collaborate with us to preserve and strengthen this program for all the students. This is being rushed at the last, we're given four weeks. You guys are given four weeks to make a decision, and it's not fair. I leave you with this question.
And that is time?
No. It's $100,000 savings.
And that is time?
It's really worth.
Our next speaker is Jenna Free.
You can send it to the Board by email at schoolboard@vbcpsboard.com.
Hello. My name is Jenna Free, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I know some of you, but tonight I'm here because I'm a parent of a child in the School Division, a second grader at Cook Elementary. He was part of the dual-language immersion program. We love Cook Elementary. I'm super excited that my child's there and in this program. And so, the survey was a little bit confusing to us parents, so I'm here, even though I'm a little nervous talking to adults, to voice my support in favor of continuing the DLI program into middle school. First, the students work so hard to learn to speak and read and write in both languages. Students come from both native languages and both, they learn together. They help each other learn both languages. They have amazing teachers, and at least the principal that I've worked with and the administration are incredible. It really seems only fair and reasonable that this division, which offers extensive opportunities for students, would have an opportunity for elementary DLI students to continue learning Spanish at a rigorous level through a continued immersion program in middle school. Second, students in the elementary DLI program are part of a cohort, so they take all their classes together through every grade. As a parent, I think of the transition to middle school for my child, and I think, you know, that transition may be eased a little bit with some of her cohort classmates with her going into a new school, or even bringing in students from other elementary schools that have the DLI background. Third, students accepted to the DLI program are encouraged to think long-term about their Spanish immersion education, and we were told as kindergartners that there was a pathway for students to continue Spanish in middle school and even be directly accepted into the Global Studies and World Languages Academy at Tallwood High School. And so, for students and families who are focused on language acquisition in the long term and want their students to be global citizens, these students should be able to continue this path through middle school and into high school. And lastly, if the Board selects the one-site option at VB Middle, which I support, it seems to me like this would function a lot like a high school academy, and because of that, one of the big things that we would like to ask for is funding for transportation to make sure that all DLI students across the district are able to get to the program. So, funding for transportation, just like is done with the academy and magnet programs, as far as I know. So, in conclusion, thank you. Please vote to continue the DLI program into at least one middle school, so these students, who work so hard, can keep learning in the best environment for their continued language acquisition and for their future readiness. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Heather Sype.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the School Board, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Heather Sype, and I am the President of the Virginia Beach Education Association. I am also a world languages educator, taught German. I want you to think for a moment what would happen to your family if you lost 15% of your income. I'm not going to attach a dollar amount to that because 15% is different for each and every one of you. What would your family have to do? What decisions would they have to make if you lost 15% of your income? That's the decision some of your staff are facing with the health insurance premium increases. The premium hikes equal 15% of their income. I also want to talk to you about the dual-language immersion program. Fidelity, fidelity in the language. You can't get that through distance learning. Taught German for 23 years here in Virginia Beach, and I taught a lot of distance learning classes. It'll keep a program from dying. It doesn't allow the program to thrive, not for a language. Conversations are essential in a language. Conversations that free flow, not something where you have to push a button to speak, push a button to speak, push a button to speak. Oh, my goodness, I'm on camera. I don't want somebody to see me while I'm speaking. Now, I'm so nervous because everyone's focused on me when I'm speaking. How many people stand up here in front of you, their first time speaking, and tell you how nervous they are? Now, put that on a sixth grader, who's now speaking on a camera. Distance learning keeps programs from dying. It does not allow a language to thrive. These students who are in this immersion program deserve so much more than to possibly have to do this in distance learning. I urge you to seriously consider the one-school option at VB Middle, and I also encourage you to ensure that that 60-some percent of respondents who didn't have enough information to make a decision, get the answers to their questions and get the information they need. You heard that the survey was confusing. You heard it wasn't given in Spanish for our families who only speak Spanish. Let's do better.
And, Madam Chair, that was our last speaker for this evening?
Okay, thank you. We are now on to the information section, and we are on the Policy Review Committee, and we welcome Kami Lanetti, School Board Attorney.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board members, and Dr. Robertson. I'm Kami Lanetti, the School Board Attorney. And tonight, I'll be bringing you the recommendations from the, sorry, I'm going to play my, I doubt it, from the PRC meeting. First one up is 327, which is in our Business and Instructional Operations Center section of the School Board policies. This is barring, and there are no recommended changes for this. This is just our five-year check on this. Are there any questions about 327? Hearing no questions on 327, we'll move on to 628, which is Driver Education. We did a little bit of work on checking on the current status of the law, so some updates to this. We are adding a second central paragraph that will say, "Behind the Wheel." Instruction will be offered to eligible students during and after-school hours, instruction of vehicles that are available, and there's an updated code section to that. Other than that, those are the only recommended amendments to policy 628. Are there any questions on 628? Hearing no questions on 628, we'll move on to 7. 7-2 is action to this notification of School Board meetings. We did a little bit of work looking at what the current status is. You will see a little bit more redlining in this section. Updating on Section B, we now read notification of School Board meetings. Any person may annually file with the clerk a written request of notification of School Board meetings. The request shall include the requested's name, address, ZIP code, daytime, telephone number, electronic address, and if available, organization if any. Those are code languages, language from the code that we've gone ahead and added to this particular section. It's a practice we follow anyway. They give us updates on, this is not a new procedure for us. We just clarify what information has to go to the clerk. And then we read then the final sentence, "Without objection, by the requested notice may be provided by electronic means rather than having to mail it out to them." Update a little bit on the Public Participation section, Public Attendance in Section C, which the final sentence will read, "Members of the public require accommodation to attend, to listen, or observe an open School Board meeting should contact the clerk of the School Board to advance the meeting." That has actually been on, all your agendas on that. We just wanted to add that to our policy, but that has been our procedure. Are there any questions on the policy? 7-2. Hearing no questions on 7-2, we will move on to, oops, down. To 713, Appeals of School Board Decision. This language is directly out of the state code. We are not recommending any changes. This is simply the five-year check, so there were no recommended changes. There would just be a review by the School Board. Are there any questions about 713? Hearing no questions on 713. We're looking at 721. As you remember, we did, about seven, eight years ago, we redid a lot of the work on the Citizens Advisory Committees on there, so we were just taking a look at this again on the five-year check. There are no recommended changes, I was going to say scrivenary changes at this point. Nothing significant has been changed. has been changed in this section on it, just a minor scrivenary changes. Other than that, there are no further recommended changes from the PRC, are there any questions about 721 citizens advisory committees? And that will move us on to our final policy, which is 758, relations of government agencies, there's just a minor scrivenary change in that, other than that, there are no recommended changes to 758. Are there any questions on 758? At this time, these are the only changes to the PRC matter, and I will just, Madam Chair, take a minute to mention that we are moving our PRC meeting, which would have been tomorrow, we had to make changes, that will move to next Wednesday for anybody, nope, two Wednesdays, sorry, two Wednesdays for now.
It's supposed to be next Wednesday.
Correct, sorry, it's supposed to be next Wednesday, so if anybody's looking for our next PRC meeting, it will not be on the 22nd, it will be on the 29th, this one.
And what time is that at, Ms. Linetti? Or Vice Chair Williams? 3:30? Okay, thank you. All right, we are now on to the 2425 reversion and revenue sharing formula reconciliation, and we welcome Crystal Pate, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening Chair Brown, Vice Chair Williams, school board members, and Dr. Robertson. This presentation provides a summary of the school division's fiscal year 2024/25 unaudited reversion funds and the city school revenue sharing formula reconciliation. Tonight's presentation will include a timeline of revenue recognition, a breakdown of the fiscal year 2024/25 reversion funds, the city school revenue sharing formula reconciliation, the total amount available for reappropriation, proposed spending plans, and next steps in the approval process. To begin, I would like to review the timeline for when and how we learn about actual revenues compared to budget projections. The fiscal year 2024/25 budget was approved in May of 2024. As part of that process, staff developed a revenue forecast based on enrollment projections, which drive staffing levels, state and federal aid estimates, the city's local contribution, and other anticipated sources of revenue. These forecasts form the foundation of the budget, which spans from July through June each fiscal year. At that stage, revenues are still estimates based on the best available information, but not yet actual receipts. Throughout the year, the school board receives monthly interim financial statements reflecting actual revenues, which are reported on varying schedules. Mr. Hopkins presented the fiscal year 2024/25 year-end interim financials on September 23rd, providing an overview of revenues received related to the fiscal year. It is important to note that revenue sources are received on different timelines, so year-end reporting captures a mix of finalized and pending receipts. So, key milestones in the fiscal year 2024/25 revenue timeline include, in December 2024, the governor introduced budget amendments for the 2024/2026 biennium. The Virginia Department of Education released the accompanying document and calculation tool on January 7th, 2025, providing the first look at proposed state revenue adjustments for fiscal years 2025 and 2026. On March 6th, 2025, the Virginia Department of Education released the document and calculation tool reflecting the budget amendments adopted by the General Assembly on February 22nd, 2025, to the amended 2024/26 biennium budget. The amendments revise the governor's previously introduced budget proposal and impact fiscal years 2025 and 2026. In April 2025, on the interim financial statements, it indicated that federal revenues exceeded budget projections primarily due to impact aid payments. Other revenue sources were slightly above budget at that time, reflecting a jewel settlement that was later transferred from the operating budget to the grant fund. May 2025 interim financial statements, additional impact aid payments were received, further increasing federal revenues above budget. Other revenue sources approached budget projections due to propane bus rebate, indirect costs for grants, and lost and damaged technology, partially offset by lower-than-expected stop-armory program receipts. June 5th, 2025, the Virginia Department of Education released its final calculation tool confirming state revenue adjustments. June 30th, 2025, year-end financial statements verified that both federal revenues and state revenues, including sales tax receipts, exceeded budget. Note that sales tax allocations reported during the year are based on state revenue projections, with semi-monthly payments later trued up to actual collections. August 2025, fiscal year end close finalized and reconciled fiscal year 2024/25 financials in preparation for year-end reporting, audits, and submission of required state and federal documents. And on September 3rd, 2025, the city reported a $7.5 million surplus for Virginia Beach City Public Schools under the revenue sharing formula. This timeline illustrates that budget projections are developed using the best information available at adoption, but actual results evolve throughout the fiscal year. Maintaining flexibility is critical to managing revenue fluctuations and unforeseen expenses, such as increases to fuel or utility costs, natural disasters, emerging programs, technology needs, inflationary impacts, litigation, or healthcare costs. So, on the previous slide, we reviewed the overall timeline of revenue receipts, now let's look more closely at the composition of fiscal year 2024/25 unaudited reversion funds. This slide will break down each component contributing to the total reversion amount. Except for unexpended debt service, each item that I show you includes the dollar amount and the month and year corresponding to the timeline points. This should help connect the high-level overview with specific financial drivers behind it. First, unexpended debt service for approximately $5.6 million. This balance resulted from the absence of a bond sale, leading to lower debt service costs than budgeted. We continue to budget debt service at fiscal year 23/24 levels to avoid budget volatility as actual debt service costs have temporarily declined. We know from the beginning of the fiscal year, it is likely not going to be expended, and that the additional budgeted funds are typically directed to the CIP program at year-end. Given the city's plan to issue new bonds in March 2026, annual debt service cost is expected to rise again to projected levels in future years. Next, for revenues exceeding budget projections. Overall, for fiscal year 24/25, revenues surpassed estimates by approximately $10.7 million across all sources. In Virginia, public school divisions cannot independently spend additional revenue once received. By state codes, city council must formally appropriate those funds before the school division is authorized to spend them. Unlike local governments of Virginia, Virginia public school divisions cannot carry a fund balance, funds not appropriated revert to the locality. The reversion process allows the school board to request city council's reappropriation of those funds back to the school division. Because most revenue surpluses are identified late in the fiscal year or after year-end as the books are closed, there is rarely sufficient time to complete the appropriation process and responsibly expend the funds before June 30th. So, breaking down the $10.7 million variance further. For federal revenue, as I mentioned, the April 2025 interim financial statements first signaled a surplus due to impact aid payments, and by year-end, federal revenue exceeded budget by approximately $2.8 million, driven by impact aid and Medicaid reimbursements. For other revenue sources, the May 2025 interim financial statements showed growth in this category. By year-end, these exceeded budget by roughly $415,000, largely due to a one-time $400,000 propane bus rebate. Regarding state revenues and state sales tax, the Virginia Department of Education, as I mentioned, released the final calculation tool on June 5th. As part of the year-end closing process, a portion of sales tax receipts collected in July are recorded back to June to ensure accurate recognition within the correct fiscal year. As reported in the interim financial statements for the year ending June 30th, 2025, the results were the state revenue exceeded budget by approximately $4.7 million, state sales tax revenue was over budget by approximately $2.8 million. Regarding the reversions for the operating, athletic, and green run collegiate funds, we do not officially close the June 30th financial books until August 15th each year. During this period, several transactions, such as revenues received or expenses paid after June 30th, must be posted back to the prior fiscal year. As a result, the final reversion amounts for the operating fund, athletic fund, and green run collegiate are not finalized until the closing process is complete in August. The school operating fund reversion is approximately $21.1 million, representing 2.18% of the approved operating budget, excluding debt service and revenue variances already mentioned. As shared in prior presentations, our target reversion is around 2% annually, reflecting a physically responsible practice that preserves funds to address unanticipated costs. The athletic fund had a reversion of approximately $391,000, and green run collegiate had a reversion of approximately $344,000. Altogether, the total unaudited reversion for fiscal year 24/25 is $38,94,580, as shown at the bottom of this slide. So, under Virginia law, any unexpended local funds must revert to the governing body for reappropriation in the following year. As part of our revenue sharing agreement with the city, if by fiscal year-end, the actual non-dedicated local tax revenues differ from the budget amount, and the access is not required for the city's general fund balance reserve, the school board may request reappropriation of the school division's share. Conversely, if revenues fall short of those projections, the school division must share in that reduction. For fiscal year 2024/25, city revenues across the seven revenue sources identified in the revenue sharing agreement exceeded projections resulting in a surplus. The school division's share of that surplus is approximately $7.5 million, which again the city confirmed on September 3rd, following the close of their fiscal year and completion of financial analysis. Combining the fiscal year 24/25 unaudited reversion of $38,000, $38,94,580, with the city's revenue sharing surplus of $7,464,613, the total amount available for reappropriation is $45,559,193. It is important to note that these funds are reserved for non-recurring investments, not for ongoing obligations such as employee compensation. They will be directed toward projects and improvements that deliver longer-term benefits without adding future budget commitments. In other words, building financial capacity, not committing to a new recurring expense that must be paid every year. So, this slide presents proposed spending plan one, which outlines the allocation of approximately $45.5 million. Key allocations include, approximately $38.5 million is dedicated to the capital improvement program. In this option, there's $23.6 million for the Princess Anne High School replacement project, $4.4 million for the payroll system replacement project, advancing toward the estimated cost of $22 to $25 million. The project is currently in the beginning planning phase with a tentative go-live date of July 1st, 2029, and to date, $13.6 million has been already appropriated in the six year CIP. $10.5 million, as reflected in the approved CIP budget, will be transferred by the city to the school reserve special revenue fund for use in the 2026/27 CIP. $1.2 million is allocated for the Jericho Road demolition, and $5.8 million directed to the health insurance fund to go towards building up the health fund, two-month reserve to be two months of gross cost. This slide outlines proposed spending plan two for allocating the $45.5 million. Key allocations include approximately $44.3 million for the capital improvement program. In this option, there's $28.3 million for the Princess Anne School replacement project, $5.5 million for the payroll system replacement project. This option still has the $10.5 presented in the approved CIP budget to be allocated from reversion, and the $1.2 million for the Jericho Road demolition. Under plan two, there is no reversion funding allocated to the health insurance fund to build up the reserve. This slide outlines the next steps in the process. October 28th, the school board is scheduled to take action on the use of reversion funds. The board's action will determine which proposed spending plan to advance to city council. On November 18th, presentation of the school board approved plan to city council, and on that same day, the city will hold a required public hearing due to the size of the reappropriation request. On November 25th, city council is scheduled to take action on the reappropriation request. And that concludes the presentation, we'll be glad to answer any questions the board may have.
Ms. Melnick?
Okay, two questions. So, scenario one includes $5.8 million towards healthcare, so this presentation on the heels of our presentation this morning, I didn't see $10 million in option two, I saw zero in option two, so I'm assuming is this going to be staff's recommendation for where that $5 million is coming from, from reversion dollars, or?
Well, what we talked about earlier this evening in workshop was that the $5 million would come from this year's operating budget. This is money that, once we allocated money to CIP, which we thought was important, is obviously a priority.
Number one, right.
Then we had money that, obviously, the $10.5 is already built into the CIP approved, the $1.2 is the latest estimate we got for Jericho Road, and so the ending of that $5.8 fell out into the health insurance fund.
Okay, so.
And then, number two, honestly, number two being that that, as we all know, when it went to the city last year, it was not something that the city, but we felt like we had to put that option forward, and so this option two did not include that.
All right, well, I'm not going to rush the discussion then, since staff has not come to us with that recommendation. So, my second question is, did I hear earlier that November 18th is also the five-year forecast?
I think that's the day that it is.
We never hear it that early, so when I heard it, I.
We're trying to.
Wrote it down right away.
And I know, I just talked to Dr. Robertson today about last year, I think we put out a memo.
Yeah.
To let people know, we're just finalizing that, we have to have our information to the city on Friday, so we're finalizing that information between today and tomorrow for Dr. Robertson's final review, and then we're going to put out a memo again, just to make sure you get it on your calendars.
Okay, I'll pencil that in.
I don't think, I don't think there's been a time determined yet, we just know it's, but I know, I do think they have a formal city council.
Yeah, well, the date was important too, so yeah, more than the time. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rogers?
I'm going to go back to what Mrs. Melnick was asking. It was my understanding in our presentation that if we were to put $10 million in the health account, that that would come from our reversion funds. So, Dr. Robertson, I'm confused as to then where that money's going to come from?
Yeah, so the presentation earlier was a presentation to use money in this year's operating budget in January to provide a basis for the health fund balance. This presentation is independent of that presentation. This presentation contains two options to use reversion funds that we would request for use in future years. And so, that would be either we give the majority of the money to the CIP in terms of the Princess Anne High School replacement project, the payroll system, we've already have the $10.5 in our CIP right now, or we give a portion of that $5.8 million into the health insurance fund, regardless of what we do from the earlier discussion.
So, the, okay, because I want to be very clear on this, so should we choose to put that money in the health insurance fund and do a $10 million, that would be $15.8?
$15.8, that's correct.
Okay, because, okay, and so then, the $10 million would come from next year's reversion, I'm.
No, it would come from our current operating budget.
Oh, the operating?
Yes.
That's where I'm getting confused, thank you so much. Okay, so then it would just put another chunk of money on top of the five or 10, again, because they talked about if we don't do this, it will affect our staff, which I don't want to do. So, I'm just trying to get clear where our money's coming from, that's all. Thank you.
Okay, so, Mr. Culpepper's screen isn't putting him in queue, but he was in queue, so Mr. Culpepper?
I hate to ask kind of the same question, but I kind of have the same question, because I think what I gathered was it's one or the other, right?
So, it's not one or the other. There are two independent requests. The first request that you heard in workshop was our recognition that trying to operate The first request that you heard in workshop was our recognition that trying to operate in 2026 with a roughly $1 million health fund balance is probably not a good idea. So we determined that, well, if we put $5 million from this year's operating budget, that would at least get us to a $6 million buffer, and we provided two options, the second option of $10 million. Of course, it could be any number between five and 10. Secondly, with this particular request, our rationale here is, with our revenue sharing formula, with the true-up that's done at the end of every year, as Ms. Pate mentioned, there was an additional $7.5 million because the city overperformed their estimates, that we would like to believe that if we would have known that information much earlier, the board might have had other alternatives they could have chosen prior to. So we thought that maybe we could use a portion of that $7.5 million, in this case, $5.8 million, to also put towards that health fund balance. So if the option was $5 million and we put $5.8 more million in from this, that $10.8 million would put us on solid ground as we get into discussions, the board gets into discussions in several months around compensation, which includes either pay increases or health insurance. So they're two independent requests.
All right, so I follow. So the first thing we need to decide is five or 10 million from this year's operating budget spent in this fiscal year. And then the reversion is something we can spend in next fiscal year, even if it comes from this year's budget.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. I'm trying to think if I had more than that. I think that's it. Thank you.
Vice Chair Williams?
Yeah, so a comment kind of caused me to pause during the workshop, and maybe I heard it wrong. So the $5 million from the operating budget, I thought, somebody said, well, it's from the operating budget, but it's what we would have had left over. So it is strictly from the operating budget, correct? Because that almost sounds like it's reversion funds, but you're calling it operating budget.
So, well, I can see why you're saying that. So what it is, is we budget like about 98% of our budget each year. And so we do that in case we have unneeded things that we need to pay for and we don't want to spend our budget to zero. If we did not spend it, it would be reversion. It's just a matter of when, we're trying now to take that money that we know will not fall out into reversion, increase the employer contribution to boost up that health fund balance. And so that will start January 1 for the plan year. And then, but I can...
Yeah, so it's when you spend it. Okay, I just want to make sure, because I don't want to be, I want to make sure we're transparent, especially to our neighbors across the street.
This is appropriated now.
Yeah, okay.
And so if we left it on the table, then we would have to go back to the city and ask for it to be reappraparated.
Right, and the health fund is considered a one-time?
So that is questionable to some. So I will say, when the city did not approve it, they didn't feel like, they felt like it should come out of our operating budget. You could also look at it that we put money into CIP a significant amount each and every year, which is an ongoing thing. We're not committing this division to $5 million, $10 million every year for the health fund. We're saying we'd like to be able to put that in one time for, to build up that reserve. So that's why we're looking at it that way. It's something that's been brought up through this, all of our health fund discussions. And so we felt it important to bring it to the board for an option to consider if they would like to move that forward to city council.
Okay, because that's a concern of people that were here, because we've tried, you know, we did it before and it was, you know, city council said, no, that's not reversion, that's not the proper use of reversion funds. So that will require some explaining and convincing and some work on our part. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Callen?
As my request was earlier, when we were talking about the operating budget and the two options that are available for the five or the 10 million, and seeking your recommendations so that we don't lose track of the big picture that represents all of the issues surrounding finances and expenses, et cetera. Will you also be making a recommendation relative to this reversionary option A or option B or one or two? Will you be giving us your guidance as we take that into consideration in our decision-making process?
So I'm going to answer that question for you, Ms. Callen. We recognize from a historical standpoint how our partners at the city have viewed the use of reversion funds. And as Ms. Pate explained, it's tomato-tomato with whether or not a commitment to rebuild the health fund balance is an ongoing expense or it's a one-time expense. And I appreciate her example of the CIP. Yes, the money that goes into CIP is used for one-time projects, but I don't know if you could call HVAC systems that, or roofing systems, or foundation systems are one-time projects when you have 90 buildings. So I think the idea is, what we're trying to do is give the board an opportunity to have options. Personally, I'm comfortable with $5 million out of the operating budget and uncomfortable with $10 million out of the operating budget. And I, so to your question, Mr. Callen, it's going to be difficult for us to make a recommendation to an elected body who's trying to be good stewards. We've given you our best thinking, and we'll need some direction from you guys in terms of what you're comfortable with.
Thank you.
Mr. Cummings?
So looking at the Jericho Road demolition at $1.2 million, if that ends up getting allocated, how does that impact the project timeline for demolition? Does that happen within our fiscal year or is it next fiscal year?
So they'll reappropriate it for this fiscal year, but a timeline, let me let Melissa answer.
Okay.
So, thank you.
And whenever that funding is made available to us, so if reversion's approved, I think in around November timeframe, we would begin to do environmental assessment for the demolition, look at doing a demolition plan, and then starting work on a re-subdivision. So we're hoping, the sooner we get the money, the sooner we're able to go forward with those actions, and we're hoping for that to occur from early winter, late fall, through hopefully spring. So as soon as that becomes green, we will start the process.
Thanks, that's the only question I have, just wanted clarification, if it does help. Because I know it's been a project in the back pocket for a long time, so if it helps quicken, you know, the delivery of a park, I think that's great. Thank you.
Okay, I have some questions. So I don't want to discount the concerns regarding the health fund balance. I am very concerned about it. I think that we definitely are going to have some work to do in that area. I feel like that's understating it, but we definitely have a lot of work to do in that And I was, again, I'll point out that I wasn't here at the time, but at the time, the school board or staff, I'm not really sure exactly what the process was at that time. I've dug back around, I don't see any actual formal decisions related to the cost of insurance. But a decision was made at a time when city council had kept their health insurance premiums the same for us, as a school division, to cut ours in half. And during that time, our health fund balance went down, and so it was kind of of our own making, right? And my concern that I have isn't that, I don't, I mean, I do think that we need to put money in the health fund balance, and I recognize that. But my concern is that we have a revenue sharing policy, the city council and school board policy, and everything that's spelt out in that policy related to the reversion request and the true-up process is in here. And in that policy, under section, sorry, wrote down, 6.35, it says, "The school board resolution may request the use of excess or reversion funds for one-time purchases or to be retained according to the applicable policy for the schools' reserve fund." So earlier, when we discussed the health fund balance, it was discussed that every single one of the expenses that comes into, comes out of that health fund is ongoing healthcare for our employees and their families. And so I kind of tend to be on the healthcare and health fund balance is not a one-time expense, and we have a revenue sharing policy. City council rejected that request of $10 million last year. I did vote for it at that time. I don't feel like I would be able to support this, even though I recognize, and this is my personal belief, I recognize, though, the concerns, you know, and I also recognize pointing out the true-up piece, but I think that might be a little bit easier to even get behind if the request was to put the $7.4 million. I feel like then it would at least be the same amount. But nonetheless, I'm not going to be able to support a reversion request that has health fund balance, even though it's frustrating as it is, Ms. Melnick.
So to that point, though, I mean, maintaining two months isn't always the same number, right?
No, it varies based on cost.
It's based on cost. So that's where I would argue it's not a one-time, one-time piece, because the dollar figure fluctuates all the time.
And I don't want to get too far in the weeds, because I am certainly not the expert on healthcare, but when the rates were dropped, it was based on 10 years' worth of data that showed that we were building up a fund balance pretty significantly, and we were not doing anything but leaving the rates the same, and we were constantly increasing the employer portion. So while that did not work out, because things changed rapidly after we did that, I think a target, and this is really more Linda's lane than mine, would be to maintain a reserve, but then try to get the balance between employer and employee so that you're not tapping into that reserve like, or building it up. It's supposed to be something that's kind of relatively fluid, but not fluctuating like crazy. And that way, if something happens in healthcare, even though we planned, we would have that reserve available for that purpose.
Yeah, I mean, and I will just note, so the public knows, we did have some anomalies this year with some of our numbers, and so, yeah, I won't belabor it either, but as I said before, healthcare is rocket science. I was quoted last time, so I'll just repeat it.
I don't see any more questions, but colleagues, if you could just keep in mind that next meeting, we're going to need to vote on one of these options. So if you could come prepared to have this, make a decision, that would be great. All right, we are going to now move on to the gifted advisory appointment recommendations and...
No, CIP update?
Oh, the CIP update.
Mr. Freeman was so excited.
We welcome Jack Freeman, chief operations officer. I don't know why I checked it off, it wasn't done yet.
Would have been happy to wait. All right, good evening, Chair Brown, Vice Chair Williams, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. Here is the agenda for tonight's presentation. We'll walk you through each of these as we go through the slides. Following our last brief to you on September 9th, we participated in a joint meeting with the city staff to discuss the Princeton High School project and the capital program as a whole. We discussed funding, procurement options, debt service, and the potential policy implications for including school board members as liaisons during the process. This morning, we also participated in a joint modernization committee meeting with elected officials and city staff, where we discussed the work of the CIP committee, student enrollment trends and building utilization. We reviewed the September 26 joint meeting with the city staff and discussed next steps. At our last school board meeting on September 9th, there was a lot of discussion and questions about three-letter acronym related to advertising for construction. And based on all discussions from that meeting until now, let's focus on the top two on this slide. An RFQ is a request for qualifications. Putting an RFQ out is the first step used to evaluate firms' experience, expertise, and capacity to perform professional services. Offerers without suitable qualifications are eliminated during this process, and we would hope to get on the order of about two to five qualified offers. An RFP is a request for proposals that enables contractors who were determined to be qualified during the RFQ process to submit proposals outlining their approach, pricing, and qualifications. RFPs are used for several different procurement methods shown in the sub-bullets. And based on our discussion with city staff, including the city manager and many members of his leadership team, they strongly recommended using the design-build method of procurement. While there was a fair amount of questions at the September 9th school board meeting about RFIs or requests for information, this would not be a part of the recommended next steps for this project, but we included it just for awareness, because there was enough discussion about it. In the last meeting, there was an exchange related to, so it sounds like we're really close, so let's talk about what close may or may not mean. And let's follow the timelines, starting from the green on the left and moving right. A policy that would support what staff believes we're hearing from the board is currently being developed. With that policy in place, we could then advertise the request for qualifications, resulting in a shortlist selection of qualified contractors for the Princeton High School project. This process in green is estimated to take between four and eight months. Once we've selected a list of qualified contractors, we could then issue a request for proposal where we could evaluate offers and select a contractor. We could then enter into an agreement with the contractor, who would develop a 70% design with a guaranteed maximum price or GMP. For clarity, and there's been discussion about this before, so I just want to make sure we're clear, there's going to be a lot of caveats, because we're going to talk about numbers that we currently have. But for clarity, that design could be completely new and unique, or it could be a modification of the 30% design that was previously developed and that we own. The school board would then have to decide to accept an offer, and the process in blue, or not accept that offer, and the process in blue is estimated to take between 12 and 24 months. And so that would get us to the guaranteed maximum price at that timeframe. If the offer was accepted by the board, the time from construction agreement to construction complete would be about four to five years. These times are additive. So on the low side, it's estimated to take about 16 months to get a GMP, and that's on the low side. On the high side, it could take as long as 32 months to get to a GMP, and then four to five years for construction. So that's the timing. Now let's look at funding or appropriations. The red box is around the Princeton High School replacement project. The third column to the left with numbers shows over $176 million. I want to make sure everybody's with me. All right, that column is the appropriations to date. That is the total amount of appropriations that have built up from prior year appropriations. So small nuance, we have already spent over $5 million on the design work from the PPEA. So about $170 million remains available in the appropriations to date, and those funds are available today. If you look one column to the right, you see $20.5 million. Those appropriations became available on July 1st, and when you add up appropriations to date and year-one appropriations, you get about $190 million. Again, those funds are available today. Again, those funds are available today. What you can't see on the slide is the reversion funds proposal. It's currently in process. You guys had a brief on it. So there are some numbers in there that could affect how this all adds up. So we're just going to use this as an example of the two proposals. And we know there's much work that has to be done before it gets to approval. But if you use a number from the previous brief, let's just use the 28-1 as an example, and we'll go back to the 23-1. But if we use the $28 million as an example, that is one of the proposals added to the Princeanne High School project. And you add that to the total project, that would mean that about $218 million would be available if approved by the board and city council. If it was the $23 million, then you subtract 5,000, I'm sorry, $5 million from that. So that's about $213 million. So that just gives you the big picture of what money could be available in that project in the near future. So let's just call it, just for ease of comparison, let's just call it 218 for now. We know that number could be different based on what happens with reversion. Let's just call it 218 for comparison purposes for now. All right. Maury High School recently entered into an agreement to build, or Norfolk entered in an agreement to build Maury High School for $220 million. So Maury is being designed to support 1,750 students using 309,000 square feet at about 176 square feet per student. So again, this goes back to the comment that we made before. We know that the work that we've done previous is all subject to change. So we're just talking about comparison purposes only. There are changes that can happen to that. But how does that compare with our current Princeanne High School project? And let's just use the most recent space reductions to the 30% design that came from school board feedback in about June of 2024. We had the meeting with the school board. There were recommendations for reductions, so let's just use those numbers. That plan was designed to support 1,800 students at 296,500 square feet with about 165 square feet per pupil. So those two buildings are roughly comparable. Couple of things to note about the Maury project. Students will continue to use the legacy building during construction of the new building. The new building is essentially being built on the other side of the lot, so they don't need swing space. Also, while they have a couple of ball fields for baseball and softball, and they have tennis courts, they play the majority of their VHSL outdoor athletics offsite. And therefore, they do not need that infrastructure. It's not in their project. And finally, Maury does not support a district-wide special education center like we have at Princeanne High School. So those additional programs needs at Princeanne High School, which in our current project, and again, all subject to change, but those are currently in our project. So you've got the district-wide special education center supporting 150 students at about 37,000 square feet. Again, those are the numbers that we have right now, subject to change. Swing space to be used during construction in our current plan includes using Holland Road Annex during that construction. And then the athletic fields, restrooms, concessions, all combined to add an estimated $50 to $60 million to our Princeanne High School project. And those are $20, $25. And finally, Maury obviously bid in the year 2025. We just shared the timeline for an RFQ and an RFP process. And as time passes, inflation has significant impact on cost. So best case is a 2027 bid. So that goes back to the timeline that we shared earlier. So in our example, when we talk about bid, what we're talking about is a comparison of when we would get to a guaranteed maximum price. That's the comparable with the bid that they did. So if we get to a GMP in 2027, we estimate an additional cost of $30 to $40 million for the whole project due to inflation. If we're, if we get to a GMP in 2028, we project an additional $45 to $55 million in the project due to inflation. So from an appropriations perspective, we told you several slides ago that if the reversion request goes through in the rough ballpark, we're just going to use the example of 218. It could be different. We're just using that from an example. But if that's the number, an additional, adding the additional program needs for Princeanne High School and the estimated inflation, an additional $80 to $115 million would be needed to add to the Princeanne High School project to get to successful completion. Again, that's if the, I want to acknowledge that it is if there's no modifications, which is not going to happen to what we currently have on the plate. The intent behind this is not to give you actual amounts. It's to be able to show you the ballpark and the range things could be and the factors that make one school look like it costs this much and other schools look like it costs this much. All right. That's a lot. So we believe we're hearing from the school board that you desire to initiate a process to build Princeanne High School. If that is the case, potential next steps would be to create requests for qualifications, including identifying a development team, establishing a timeline, and developing and identifying content and specifications. We also request direction to schedule a building utilization committee meeting. And when the items under the first bullet are accomplished, we can then advertise an RFQ if that is our direction. Dr. Robertson, anything to add before opening up for questions? But that'll open up for questions.
Mr. Culpepper?
First off, thanks for all the hard work getting to this point. Appreciate everything you did to set up the meeting with city council today. And obviously, all the conversation you had with city council in preparation for that, which got us on the same sheet of music and made today's meeting quite easy. Sorry, I'm just going to start with that intro. I'll pitch back in here later. And let all the others ask questions first.
Ms. Rogers?
Okay. So I understand that all of this is a possibility, but I'm kind of confused as to, under additional considerations, the athletic fields, restrooms, and concessions. If the swing space that is needed is going to be at Holland Annex, and I literally live steps from there, why wouldn't the high school just use another school's already-done athletic field with restrooms and concession stands during the time that they're in the swing space where we wouldn't need to actually outfit that at the old Callum, Holland Road Annex?
Can you bring up that slide just so we have the visual to look at? So what that is meaning to indicate is that Princeanne High School has a football field.
Right. And so I, because you have it with the swing space. So I was, you're saying that that's what we have to build?
Yeah. Those are three separate subbullets. So the swing space, Holland Road Annex, to your point, that has a football location. Everything's fine. Although we'd use as part of it. The athletic fields, restrooms, and concessions. So Maury does not have that on their side.
Got you. Okay. That's what I was confused about. I thought you meant we would need to have that as part of the swing space in addition. And I'm like, why would we do that if we're not? Okay. I was confused on that one. Thank you.
Ms. Melnick?
I think I've asked this before, but was any, has any work been done on the Princeanne High School space? Like site work? Was there site work done as part of? So that's a little right off the top. That was done during the PPEA process, correct?
A little bit of work was done. I'm trying to understand the context and how significant your...
I mean, we're not starting with a completely blank slate. There was something done.
I meant to be the non-engineer person here. Melissa's the better person for this. We did do site work on there. There are road work we had to do. There's environmental issues we had to do to resolve some of that. It was good as the time we did it. There is a possibility that somebody looking at it might want to update those. But what you can do in this process is say, here's what we have. So if you're comfortable with the geo survey, you're comfortable with some of the environmental stuff we did. There was some preliminary work we did. All right. They don't need to do that if they're willing to rely. There's a possibility they may say, we want to do our own work, so we're not liable for adopting. But that we will provide all that information to them, so that we give them a head start, and they might not have to spend that money.
Okay. And was anything done at the old Callum, the Holland Road Annex? Or what, what's it going to take to get that up to snuff, if you will, for Princeanne High School kids?
So there's a fair amount of work. We would have to prepare it for the West Wing students as well.
Oh, that, okay.
Fair amount of things that have to be done. We do. We have been, because it is an empty building, been doing smaller projects over time to try and chip away at it where we can. But there will still need to be a fair amount of work to prepare it for those students.
All right. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Callan?
Okay, sir. Page six has the spreadsheet with Princeanne High School framed in a red box. And the total project costs are $499,847,192. When I go to page seven, we take the additional considerations comparing Maury High School plus the three bullet points for the additional program needs and swing space, et cetera. My question is, with the additional information on page seven, with the education center, et cetera, and the cost for inflation, if we round that up and say that's another $97 million between those two middle points, does that 97 get added to the 499, or is it contained therein?
No. And that's why I didn't talk about the 499 at all when we're talking. So that 499 is based on an estimated bid date. And so those of you who might remember, there was a change from when we initially gave the CIP to you and then what happened after. And the result of that is we needed to move Princeanne High School from year six to a later year. So that 499 is based on a 2035-ish bid date. That's why I didn't reference it. The important numbers are the numbers that I talked about, appropriations to date, year one, and then reversion.
So that whatever we do, we need to be mindful of the fact that we're in comparison to Maury High School. There's an additional $55 million for the middle bullet points and another $42 million approximately between the inflation factors as well. So just, you're making us aware of those additions there, too.
Yes. And the reason why is because we heard $200 million and $220 million thrown out in previous meetings a lot around, hey, we think it could cost this much. That's probably related to the, hey, we just had a building that was very similar that got bid.
Right.
So we have a hard number. So we just wanted to be able to show how that compared.
And those are honest questions that not only are we asking, but the community is asking. Just trying to say apples to apples, are we comparing apples to apples? And the answer is no, it's actually apples to oranges in this situation.
Yes. But we do have a very good apples to apples for the baseline school. It's just the other elements that get added to it.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So I'm just going to hunker down on these couple first bullets instead of getting into the weeds of the rest of that process. So it sounds to me like for policy, that's a policy review committee conversation. And I assume that that's being worked on already.
We anticipated the policy will be in the next PRC agenda.
Okay. Great. This RFQ, is there any opportunity? Does that come to the board prior to going out? Do we have to see what's kind of in that request?
So we anticipate that being part of the process, because we're going to need direction from the board, because we know that there are thoughts for how to share and what the expectations that are going to be in the RFQ. So that is a, we know that we're going to need to get direction from the board. And then there's discussion of what that appropriate level of liaison might be.
My question was if we're going to be able to see what the specifications are for the RFQ.
Well, let's clarify. Let me help you a little bit with, what you're going to be doing is a different form of project delivery. We've just done a lot of studying on this this week. So some of us have been working on this. You will be using a form of either design-build or construction management. We believe you're going to go with the design-build project management. What that does is a two-step process. One is you're going to qualify your vendors' contractors first. And so that's the RFQ, the qualifications. So you would be asking, you know, what have you built before? What is your management style? Show us other projects you've done. We would get references on it. That's what the RFQ is doing. They'll know something about what the project is, what we're anticipating to do. But you're just looking at an RFQ process to qualify potential contractors. And you can have a role in looking at, what are you looking for in a contractor? But this will not be involving, what are the specifications for the building? It's not going to say this. We will tell them what we're looking for, so they have some idea what our intentions are, what we're requiring, so they can decide whether they want to put in information. But the RFQ will be just for us to decide who are people that we potentially ask to give us the RFP. I think what you're talking about, Ms. Brown, is more the RFP stage where, okay, we picked three of you, three contractors we think have the capability of building what we want. You've shown an interest. Now, here are the specifications. Here, you come back to us, what are your innovative ideas? Here's everything we've got. You come back to us at that point. There is a role for you to play as liaison on there. But the RFQ process is more about picking the contractor, which, again, is not something you don't have, you aren't involved in, but it doesn't involve building the building yet.
Thank you. Ms. Melnick?
Well, that's my question, is I've been on the board for 11 years, and we've never been involved in contractor selection. So I'm a little confused why the board would have a say in that. That's, that's, my alarm bells are going off big time. So I've never heard of that before.
I think part of it, in our discussions with the city, they've mentioned they've had city council liaisons sitting on some of these processes. So there is somebody watching what's going on, understands it, and can help it. So that was a suggestion that we've looked at, is how do we incorporate you into this? Now, if you want to be involved in it, but I fundamentally, but I have some potential problems with you being too involved in the decision, because there are potentials for conflict of interest and other things in this.
With 11 elected officials sitting up here, I, I'm freaking out at the prospect.
Yeah. That's what we're looking at, is how to involve you in it on there. But we, keeping you advised is what's going on is something we could do. Having a role in making decisions is something we have to be careful with, so you don't put yourself in a conflict position.
I don't want any part of that. I'll just lay that out there. But I think that's inappropriate for the board to be involved in the selection of a contractor. That's just my, that's my opinion.
Okay. So I'm going to clarify, I was not talking about being involved in the selection of the contractor. I was talking about being involved in making sure that the specifications that we're requesting from contractors is what the board is willing to participate in and wanting. So, okay. All right. Mr. Culpepper?
Well, I wasn't going to say this, but given that, I will. Jack and I were talking about this earlier. You know, in the military, it was somewhat of a joke sometimes. You know, I want to buy this widget. And you'd go out and you're out of specification that only this widget can fit. And so I get to buy the widget I want to buy, right? And I think that's kind of a little bit what the chair is getting at here a little bit. We just want to make sure we have a little bit of oversight over how the RFQ is written. We'll just call it for transparency. Make sure it's written in a proper manner to encourage people who are truly, in fact, qualified to build our high school. And the only other question I had, everything else was covered. You briefly mentioned the West Wing. Where is the swing space for that?
It would be at Princeanne, at the Holland Road Annex.
Holland Road Annex as well. Okay. Thank you. It's all good. Thanks, Ken, for your work.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. The rest of my stuff is further down the line than now, so I'm going to just move on here. So I don't see any additional questions. Thank you. I appreciate your work on this and appreciate the joint modernization meeting that you all had today. Sounds like it was a good meeting, and thank you for all your work.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. We are now on to the Gifted Citizens Advisory Committee Appointment Recommendations. And I got to pull it back up. For the, this is for the Gifted Education Committee Advisory Committee that was reopened back up. And the recommendations are Judon Baxter for Salem and Fuad Musa for Ocean Lakes. And I apologize if they're tuned in and I misspoke their names. If there's any questions, Laura Beth, I don't know if you want to come up to the microphone or not. How long was this open for? Again, you reopened.
So this was open for a month-ish, around there. We had nine applicants total that applied, and these were... We had nine applicants total that applied, and these were the two that the committee chose after a long review of it. It was posted through our website and through every social media platform, thanks to Nicole's team. I think it was even posted on LinkedIn, which I was thought was kinda cool. Posted on our website, posted, sent to you all, and posted, um, from your stuff, as well, sent home in every principal packet memo, um, for principals to send out as well. So we definitely got it out there and got nine applicants total.
That's great news. All right, is there any, Ms. Rogers?
Just a quick question. So this then fulfills the two seats that were open, and now we have a full committee?
Correct, now every school zone has their representative.
Okay, thank you, and I wanna thank everybody involved, thank you. I know that getting the word out there definitely helped a lot, so I'm happy. This will be up for a vote at our next school board meeting. We are now on to our consent agenda. We just have religious exemptions on the consent agenda. Are there any objections? The school board voting on the consent agenda as presented. Seeing none, I call for the motion to vote on the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Mr. Cummings, seconded by Ms. Dwyer, and I call for the vote to approve the consent agenda.
So Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion to pass for the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. We are now on to the personnel and administrative appointments. I call for a motion to approve the personnel report and administrative appointments. Moved by Ms. Rogers, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to approve the administrative appointments.
Mr. Cummings, how do you vote? Thank you, Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion to pass for the approval of the personnel report and administrative appointments.
Thank you. Dr. Robertson, do you have any administrative appointments?
I do, I do. Tonight, I'm, I'm pleased that you've accepted our recommendation for Jacqueline Kinney, currently an admin assistant at Corporate Landing in Kempsville Elementary Schools, to be the next assistant principal at Lanstown Elementary School. Next, I'm pleased you've accepted our recommendation for Casey Morrison, a transportation area supervisor in the Office of Transportation and Fleet Management Services, to be the next coordinator of transportation in the Office of Transportation and Fleet Management Services. And that concludes the recommendations.
All right, thank you. We are now on to committee organization and board reports. Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, I have two things. First and foremost, as part of the Human Rights Commission, I took two of our commissioners, Ron, Commissioner Ron Taylor and Commissioner Mark Stevens, to Renaissance Academy for a tour, because they had some questions, and they just wanted to see the experience firsthand, so it was a delightful tour. Great job, got to meet the new director, ask questions, but most importantly, um, they just wanted to see the work in progress and see the new vision. So, I'm glad that we were able to have that opportunity for our, our commissioners on the, the city committee. The second aspect in, I guess, board report is a nonprofit HR mask in my community, in my, in my district, wanted to share about the, uh, the Student Pledge Against Gun Violence, uh, which takes place tomorrow, and it's a pledge that says, "I will never bring a gun to school. I will never use a gun to settle a personal problem or dispute. I will use my influence with my friends to keep them from using guns to settle disputes. My individual choices and actions, when multiplied by those of young people throughout the country, will make a difference." And by honoring this pledge, um, you know, I think it'll help reduce gun violence in our community, specifically, uh, this person comes from College Park, and, you know, she's had some issues of violent, gun violence in their community, so we will, I know that we'll, there's, uh, with the park reopening, there will be some events, and so I'll continue to share those with the school board and with the general public, but wanted to recognize this nonprofit organization that works in my district for their great work and their commitment to our community and gun safety.
Thank you. Dr. Green?
Um, thank you. I want to let everyone know there is a change in the legislative committee meeting schedule. Our next meeting will be on October 31st at 9:30 a.m., instead of the November date that was, uh, published. So our next legislative committee meeting will be on October 31st at 9:30 a.m.
Vice Chair Weems?
Um, yes, I attended the Gifted Advisory Committee meeting, and it was, it was a great meeting. It's the first one that I've been to officially as the liaison. Kami presented everything that they needed to know about running a meeting, and Robert's rules and all that. And then, um, the MAP growth testing data that we got in September was presented for all the members. They talked about school visits, and then, of course, they voted on the two members that we will be voting on in two weeks. So it was a great meeting, thank you.
Mr. Callen?
Yeah, I wanted to report that on October 1st, Ms. Rogers and I attended the Harbor Hope, or facility that has been made available now, and, uh, we had an opportunity to mix and mingle with, uh, the gentleman running the program as the director, and, uh, to interact with some of the students that were there that day, as well as some of those who are on staff. And I think I can speak for both of us. It left us with a very favorable impression, and are looking forward to the continued outreach that it has in the community for those who are in need of the services. And on October 4th, I had an opportunity to attend what was referred to as the STEM Fest that took place in the Joint Use Library in the Princess Anne Complex. There were lots of different organizations represented, Norfolk State, Lanstown High School, uh, the Office of FACE, the National Association for Engineers, in various capacities, the Public Library. It was interesting, informative, and, uh, there was, uh, an opportunity for those who had been in the program and that were now in college to speak to those who are high school students, and, uh, to encourage them to explore it. And, uh, I think the interesting takeaway was, don't let your feelings about how poor you are at math discourage you from being a part of the STEM program, because many of them who were in the program now and in college were saying, "I hated math in high school, but now I discovered it's really neat." So, that was quite enjor, enjoyable.
Dr. Green?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Callen, for reminding me that I also need to share, uh, on a separate visit, that I also, um, visited Harbor Hope and, and saw the great things, um, that are taking place over there with, uh, our students and students from neighboring school divisions as well.
Madam Chair, if I could share something. Earlier tonight, um, speaker indicated that, uh, perhaps some individuals didn't, uh, weren't able to access the survey. Just know that the survey we gave out for the DLI, um, that we referenced this, this evening, was available in the preferred language by the respondent. So, it was in synergy, and if they needed it in any particular language, they could select that language, and the survey was given to them in that language. And we also mailed home, um, paper copies to Cook Elementary Schools for Spanish-speaking families, because they have a large population. So, we did do that.
All right, thank you. We are going to, uh, read back into closed here, so if everybody could hang out so that you can vote into closed. Vice Chair Weems?
Recession to closed session in accordance with exceptions to open meetings laws as set forth in Code of Virginia 2.2-3711. Parts A, paragraphs 2, 7, 8, and 19 is amended to deliberate on the following matters. Two, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student of any public institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. However, any such student, legal counsel, and if the student is a minor, the student's parents or legal guardians shall be permitted to be present during the taking of testimony or presentation of evidence at a closed meeting if such student, parents, or guardians so request in writing, and such requests is submitted to the presiding officer of the appropriate board. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open session would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purpose of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Nineteen, discussion of plans to protect public safety as it relates to terrorist activity or specific cybersecurity threats or vulnerabilities and briefings by staff members, legal counsel or law enforcement, or emergency service officials concerning actions taken to respond to such matters, or a related threat to public safety. Discussion of information subject to the exclusion of subdivision two or 14 of 2.2-3705.2, where discussion in an open meeting would jeopardize the safety of any person or the security of any facility, building, structure, information technology system, or software program, or discussion of reports or plans related to the security of any government facility, building, or structure, or the safety of persons using such facility, building, or structure. Namely, to discuss, A, personnel matters, uh, um, A, discussion regarding security matters at certain administrative buildings, B, status of pending litigation or administrative cases, C, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
Okay, moved by Vice Chair Weems, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to go into closed session.
Ms. Weems, how do you vote? Thank you, Madam Chair, we have 11 ayes. The motion to pass to go into closed session. Thank you, Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes, the motion to pass to go into closed session.[101.11]
Whereas the school board of the city of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification of this school board, that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the city of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion about which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Moved by Ms. Malnick, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Okay, I call for the votes to certify closed session.
Madam Chair, we have eleven ayes. The motion to pass for certification of closed session.
Okay, thank you. It is 8:06 PM and we are adjourned.